Does a favor. Hi, thank you. So we have one item on this agenda. And it will be read, who's reading this? Mr. Hediger is going to read this. And I want to note that the agenda was amended. The superintendent just gave all board members the amendment. So the agenda that the public saw when they came in is no longer the recommendation. Mr. Hediger can elaborate on that.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, and our members of the board. It's great to be here today on a beautiful, sunshiny, clear-sky day. To read into the record for you, the recommendation from the superintendent for student makeup days, which would require board action for a modification to the already-approved S.Y. seventeen-eighteen school year calendar. The previous board agenda item that you had been received has been further reviewed and has been revised. So you do have a revised version, and that is the version that I'm going to read into public record today for your review and action. The S.Y. seventeen-eighteen academic calendar amendment, supportive of Goal One to ensure all students are college and career-ready. Students of the Savannah-Chatham County Public School System have missed seven instructional days this year due to school closures associated with dangerous weather conditions. The most recent closure resulted in six days of lost instructional time as a result of evacuations and recovery efforts associated with Hurricane Irma. The school district seeks to make up lost instructional time by utilizing three days from the first semester of the current school year calendar. The weather makeup days include Monday, October ninth, twenty-seventeen; Monday, November twentieth, twenty-seventeen, a designated makeup day; Tuesday, November twenty-first, twenty-seventeen, a designated makeup day. The calendar was reviewed for the best available options to ensure the most immediate recovery of lost instruction and to ensure student preparation for the Georgia Milestones and, of course, assessment. The rationale supportive of this calendar modification includes the utilization of the October ninth staff planning day. It utilizes two designated makeup days in November. It supports the K-12 cohort graduation rate and supports high school student performance on the Georgia End-of-Course Assessments. Thus, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the board approve the proposed modifications to the twenty-seventeen-eighteen academic school year calendar. And, of course, on approval of this action, a revised school year calendar will be completed and posted to Board Box and to the district's website.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Mr. Johnson?
I make a motion that we, excuse me, that we vote on the dates Monday, November twentieth, twenty-seventeen, as a designated makeup day, and Tuesday, November twenty-first, twenty-seventeen, as a designated makeup day.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion? Right now, he's just made a motion for those two days. Do we have a second for those two days, for that motion? Okay, in that case, do I have another motion, Ms. Hall?
I know that we approved the makeup days of Monday, October ninth, twenty-seventeen; Tuesday, uh, Monday, November twentieth, twenty-seventeen, and Tuesday, November twenty-first, twenty-seventeen, as read in the resolution.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Ms. Hines, uh, Ms. Hall?
I want to say that I'm very pleased with this. I spoke with all of the principals of the schools in my district this morning, and I feel that this is going to be a very good resolution to the whole matter. And I thank you, Madam Superintendent. I've been assured by all of them that we're going to see fantastic scores in May and that this decision will be very good for the community.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hines?
Well, I'm pleased to second this motion today. And because of many concerned parents that have emailed us, we were able to work something out that is beneficial to everyone. And we can move on with the situation of educating our children. And that's what it's all about.
Thank you. I have Mr. Johnson, Ms. Wade, Mr. Lauer, Dr. Austin Brown, and Ms. Jones.
First off, I want to like to comment on why I wanted to split the days up. Doesn't make up days, they're already in the calendar. I have no problem with those at all. I do have, the only question I have about the October ninth date was, I know it's a teacher planning day, the teachers are all going to work. However, from what I understand from talking to members of, um, of the staff is that they also usually have training that day. And I just wanted clarification if they're going to be able to make up training on that day or a different day.
Do we have someone who can speak, maybe Mr. English, Dr. Professional Development, on those days? That is a scheduled teacher work day.
Yes, we'll use a combination of activities to include, but not limited to, collaborative planning at the school level and also after-school options where teachers can come at the calendar's most convenient for them.
Thank you. Is that, it's a...
Thank you.
Uh, it's a follow-up. I believe some money may have already been spent on that professional development. Is that going to be a significant financial hardship for the district?
For any that's already planned, we will schedule as-is and we'll provide subs in those cases.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, I have Ms. Wade.
Thank you. Certainly, I'm in support of these three, so it's sort of like voting against a negative. So I'm in support of these three. But as y'all know, I was disappointed we weren't making up the eclipse day. And so I am very disappointed to see us leaving four academic days on the table. We know that the key to educating kids is having them in the classroom as a fundamental. When I first got on the board, that was a huge priority of the district. While statewide, people were furloughing teachers left and right during the economic crisis, we pinched and pulled every nickel we could to make sure that our kids were in school one-hundred-and-eighty days. When the governor cut pre-K to one-hundred-and-seventy days, we pinched and pulled to pay from our own dollars so that our kids could be in school one-hundred-and-eight days. When Brock started showing devastating academic results, we invested again, because we, in more days, because we know that kids in school get educated. That's our basic, basic mission. And so to leave four on the table is very concerning. I've heard a lot of people's vacation plans. They sound amazing. Probably about a hundred people have sent me their vacation itineraries. But when I look at the absentee dates from last year, when we also dipped into the winter break, even on December twentieth, we had over twenty-eight thousand children that came to school ready to learn. So a hundred people had vacation plans, twenty-eight thousand children came to learn. On December nineteenth, it was more, around thirty-two thousand. So the vast majority of people want to come to school on these days. They want to send their kids. They are not taking Caribbean cruises. Many of them lost work while they were at Irma. And they could use the time while their children are at school to make up for that. I think the value of travel is great, but I think the idea of depriving all of these students of school based on some people's travel schedules is irresponsible. We are an urban school district of sixty-five percent free and reduced lunch. That means most of our kids and families can't afford lunch. And those children should be in school on these days. We have working families. Last year, when we dipped into the winter holiday, my kids went to school, they took tests. They had tests that Tuesday of winter break. I went to work. We had a lovely holiday season after that. Our family was not destroyed. Our holiday season was not ruined. We readjusted our plans and carried on. It is parents' job to advocate for their best interest, but it is our job as a school board to advocate for the best interest of our children as a whole. And while I personally may be inconvenienced by having to move some things around, the vast majority of our district deserves to be able to go to school as close to one-hundred-and-eighty days as we can get. We went through the same exercise last year. And for some reason, it seems that the drama's heightened this year. But last year, we didn't have any designated days. So we pulled two from Thanksgiving, and we pulled two from the winter break, and most children came without any problems. We still left two days on the table last year. And we heard at our last academic report that we think our academic performance numbers suffered because of that absence. When we look at the calendar for eighteen-nineteen, it looks a lot like what this revised calendar would have been. It has a couple of days of that week of Christmas where we go to school. So we just approved a very similar calendar unanimously with no objections. I've heard a lot, well, no one does anything on these days. Well, that is a problem with the culture in our schools. My children, I had children at three different schools last year in three different messages. But certainly, we can make those beneficial academic days. Like I said, I had children taking tests on that Tuesday in December. We hear so much, "Teach to the test, teach to the test, teach to the test." But when you might have a few days to creatively teach, we say, "Oh, no, never mind, I can't do that." So, you know, I'm sure that academic affairs could come up with really great instruction options for teachers who aren't able to creatively use that time. But I do not believe in the free days of school, nothing happens. I think every day is a learning opportunity. There are lots of restrictions on how we can model our calendar, and we cannot please everyone. As we initially had it, we were still leaving two days on the table. I think it is no surprise that we are going to continue to have more extreme weather circumstances. Matthew didn't even happen until October, so who knows what's coming in the next few weeks. As we see more extreme weather conditions, we could have days in the winter, the second semester, where we have to chip into. And because we've used, left four here, we'll have to chip into spring break. And we'll get to have this debate all over again. And so I am very opposed to leaving days on the table. And I had hoped that we would stand strong for our vast majority of kids who want and need to come to school instead of accommodating people's vacation breaks instead of our children that need to come to school. I want to make two other points about the process that I think go beyond just the makeup days. As we anticipate more extreme weather, we need to look at our policies of when we cancel school. You know, I was not in support of the eclipse day. I wonder why we had canceled on a Friday before mandatory evacuation happens. And I think we need to look at our process of turning it around. When I watched Atlanta schools, they were going back Wednesday and Thursday. They had schools that were out of power, that they couldn't use. But the vast majority of their schools were open and ready. So somehow, we have to get our turnaround tighter so that when a storm hits Monday, it doesn't take us a full week. And I don't know if there are experts out there that do that or what, but all of Savannah was back to normal by Thursday or Friday, except for the school district. And whatever that is, if it's the buses, we are jeopardizing our children's education to be a partner with the city to bus out, if that's the problem. But we've got to get a faster turnaround. Also, I think we need to look again at the eighteen-nineteen calendar. We had so much pressure not to start school early that we have zero wiggle room next fall. We have only three days for Christmas break, I mean, for Thanksgiving break, instead of the five. And we have, we already dipped into that week of Christmas for a couple of days. So if we're going to continue to be liberal in not having school, then I think we need to look at that calendar because there is no wiggle room in an effort to accommodate the later start date. So I will vote for this because I certainly support these three. I'm very concerned the direction we're going with our willingness to not have school and to accommodate a small minority. And I will leave it at that.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. I have a number of other board members. And then I also have some individuals who signed up to speak. So I want to make sure everyone knows I'm going to get to them. But as a matter of procedure, Ms. Wade, I want to remind you that you do have the option of making a motion to amend this motion to include additional days, if you choose. Just a reminder to the board.
We will see how the comments come out.
Thank you. Mr. Lauer?
Well, we knew this was going to be a controversial issue, so I would hope a better time had been given up front. But being that the emails that I received basically have asked for this, I really can't see that there needs to be much public discussion on this point. But anyhow, with that said, and I'm glad that you went over, Ms. Wade, what you said. Because I'm very disturbed with the fact that we've taken away the instructional time from these students. I think we have forgotten what we're here to do, and that is to educate our students. And for some reason or other, the magic figure of one-hundred-and-eighty days was adopted by the state and says, "That's what you need to do, give your students instructional time." And the arguments that I have had with the volume of email which I receive, I pity these children, I really do. Because they all are about me, me, the teacher. I'm not being able to leave when I want to do this. All of them. And then be derogatory about the fact of what they did the last time that they had these days, they had to come to school when they didn't want to come. Play games in school with the kids. No instructional time. I can't do it. The teacher is there to teach. The students want to learn. And if I've got a teacher in the classroom that says, "I can't teach right because of these makeup days," personally, I don't need that teacher. I just don't need that person. And I'm sorry, because there's a lot of good teachers out there, a lot of good teachers. I didn't get the emails from them, though I got them from these ones that was me. "Your inconvenience is me." I've been inconvenienced, I'm eighty years old. I've been inconvenienced a hell of a lot of times in my life that I'd have liked to done something else that I could not do. I'm sorry, we, none of us here wanted this hurricane. But for us to say and cry, and that's what I'm telling you, cry, because we're going to take these few days at Christmas time. I'm going to add one other thing because I'm on the calendar committee. We didn't see all these people come to the calendar committee when we tried to get these days lighter. We took five days because that's what we missed last year and put them in the calendar, designated the date. You can bet there's going to be a lot more in next calendar year so that they can't say we weren't forewarned if we have an emergency. We have got to look at the instructional period of our students. Look at the GMAT scores. Fifty percent of our students are underachieved, and we're going to give two more to each of them. Well, for those teachers who are crying about the fact they can't leave, I will be watching, and I'll be watching the grades of those students. And I may come back here and say, "Well, I think we need to come to school on Saturday." Or we may cut another holiday because these students have lost, and they're not gaining. And as Ms. Wade pointed out, the research showed, we lost during that last period of time. I'm sorry for the dedicated teachers that are out there. I thank you for the job you're doing and our doing. But I do have a problem with losing these two days. And I think we, as a board, need to understand that that's our job. And sometimes, we have to make a hard decision, a hard decision. That's what we, you got elected to do. Not always is it going to be a favorable one with all of our constituents, but again, I think it's the minority.
Thank you. I have Dr. Austin Brown.
Thank you. I want to start my comments with saying that I'm very thankful. And I'm very thankful that we didn't have major loss of facilities. We didn't have major loss of life. And there are other communities that are dealing with those issues in a very, very large way. I have coworkers in Galveston who are still recovering from their bout with the hurricane. And so I don't like that we're complaining about vacation, but I celebrate and I'm happy for my community that the worst thing that they may be thinking about right now in regards to a hurricane is that they may have to give up vacation. I will, I will suffer that for them, and I am thankful for that for my community. I heard a number of concerns from the community about the nature of these makeup days. And a lot of them are what you've heard from Mr. Lauer and from Ms. Wade about the fragility of prepaid vacations, about our indifference to the morale of teachers because we're so willing to take these days. But I was waiting for the complaints that I didn't get. And the complaints that I didn't get were complaints for Title I schools. No one from Title I schools contacted me and said, "I don't want to go back." I was waiting for the complaints from children, from parents of children who had major academic challenges. And I didn't get any complaints from parents, from children, who are wondering if they're going to get to the next grade, saying, "I don't want those days." I didn't hear any advocacy for having time in the classroom, for the value of that time. However, it is shaped by the teaching professional who was there. That's what I was looking for. And while I appreciate the petition that was provided that had two thousand signatures indicating what their thoughts were about these days, two thousand only represent about, represents about six percent of the thirty-eight thousand that we serve. And so I understand that that was a fervent, energetic group, but it is still a minority compared to all of the individuals that we have to address. I have some concerns about the nature of our calendar because we're not treating it with the plasticity that we could. We're supposed to be a coastally, a coastal resilient community. We're on the water, and we know what it means to be on the water. And we ought to have greater flexibility when we're dealing with the issues of being a port city. We're having king tides, and we're having flooding where we didn't have flooding when I was a little girl. This year, the, and I'm going to pug my boss, the NOAA National Hurricane Center published in May that this was going to be a very bad year, that there was a seventy percent likelihood of eleven to seventeen storms, when on the average year, there's twelve. That there would be five to nine named hurricanes. Hurricane season starts June one and ends November thirtieth, and we've already had eight named storms. And the average for a year is six. They projected that there will be two to five category, three, four, or five hurricanes. Now, we didn't know this when we met in the calendar committee in April. And I think that in the future, we're going to have to do a more robust job at building our calendar considerations with these sorts of things in mind. Perhaps we need to have a partner from CMO on that committee so that when we're having this conversation and we're talking about different holidays that people celebrate, and everybody doesn't celebrate some of these holidays, we need to be thinking about other parts of our calendar year that are important. We need to prepare for more weather days in general because this is going to continue. And when I, and I served on the calendar committee this year, when I looked at that calendar, I didn't worry about not having that many weather days because I thought there was some plasticity, that if the district thought about the need to have a couple of more days, that we would just be able to add them. I did not expect the level of response that we had. And I think it's informative for us, and I was sharing with Mrs. Wade as chair of the calendar committee, that we need to put more weather days there so that they may be in gray, and they may be penciled in, but people won't be responding like something very, very valuable has been taken from them. Again, no loss of facilities, no loss of life. But there's been a lot of energy around this. I want to say that I am supportive of what has been presented. I think the first presentation that we got from Dr. Levett was something that took administrative courage to present to the community that you're going to have that many makeup days in the first year of a new superintendent after a hurricane. That was a very unpopular thing. And the community has testified to how unpopular that decision was in their response. I thinking, I think and looking at the data from the district for the period last year, where we looked at EOC and CRCT, I think that has informed the decision on why you see a revised proposal. So whereas we do take comments from the community to inform how we make these changes, I think the children's data tell us that just as much. And some of the teachers who wrote also said the same. So I'm going to be supporting this recommendation as it's been presented with these three days. And I'm also going to be prepared for some changes in the spring because, hear me, hurricane season is not over, and we have eight storms. And we will be possibly, hopefully we will not, but possibly having this conversation again. And if it occurs after December, then we're going to have a hard conversation in the spring, as my colleagues have stated. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Ms. Jones.
Excuse me, I have a point to board ago before you start. My Academic Excellence Committee meeting was to begin at four o'clock today. We've put it off several times. I asked why this meeting didn't start maybe at ten this morning or at noon so that everyone could have their little queeze, and we, you know, would still have my meeting on time. So I'm willing to give ten minutes of that timer. But at four-ten, I would like us to call the question so that my committee meeting can start on time.
Ms. Hall, our policy says anyone who wishes to speak in the public may speak. And so we cannot call that question until we honor anyone who has come to speak.
Yes, but I understand that you were asked why you made this meeting for thirty minutes when you knew there would be such attendance here today. And you insisted...
We're out of order. We're out of order.
Keeping it at three-thirty.
We're out of order. So if she calls the question, you simply vote on that. You don't, you can't debate someone calling the question. You simply have to vote on whether or not the majority wants to call the question.
I'm pointing out procedurally, there are a lot of people who signed up to speak. I allow, because of the revision, I allow board members to speak to this first. That may procedurally be my error, but I'm not going to penalize members of the public who came here to speak because I made a decision to...
It's my understanding you made the decision to have this meeting at three-thirty, knowing that another committee meeting was at four o'clock. So if you can explain that, then everything else would be understandable. I'd be happy to have been here eight o'clock this morning and hear everybody. But why, and Superintendent, maybe you can tell us, why was this meeting set for three-thirty when we have a meeting at four o'clock?
Ms. Hall, I'll be happy to address that after we address what is on the...
I want you to address the community because we all want to be...
I will be happy to, but not right now. Ms. Jones, you were recognized. You wanted to speak to this motion?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so very much. I will be voting in favor of the resolution put on the table today for three days. I would have voted for the six days that was put on the table a week or so ago because I do feel that the children, especially the children from the impact schools, need this instructional time and should not be taken away from them. They need to be able to get this learning, and the teachers need to be there. Was a little bit disappointed that some of the teachers felt that their vacations were more important than the children's education. That's really shocking to me. Want to say also that the people from my district, not one person called me and was in, that didn't call me and say that they were not in agreement with the six days that had been proposed. Not one person called because they know that education is important. The children can't learn if they're not at school. And it is important that these children be at school and get all these days that they need to get in order to come off of this impact list. So that is what I'm a little bit disappointed about. But I would have voted for the six days, just the way they were proposed the first time.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. I have, Ms. Hall, you want to speak? Was that the man you want to speak to, or is there something on this motion that you should speak to?
Mainly, I think Ms. Wade and Dr. Austin Brown have basically said what needed to be said, except that we do need to look at the children of underperforming schools and to give them that extra thought before we make decisions like this. I want everyone to understand that we're not succumbing to any kind of popularity contest today, that only after we understood what the data... That only after we understood what the data was and were assured that the CCRPI will not be negatively affected by these three days. That the attendance problem might be more of an issue than the amount of instruction we could have gained. So, I am in full support of the superintendent's decision, but I also agree totally with the remarks that have been made so far. And we will correct this because next year we'll have enough tentative weather days in the calendar next year that this won't have to come up every, every hurricane season.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about for the eighteen, nineteen school year.
It's already past that calendar and it's tighter than this one.
We can certainly go back and revise it.
I'll leave you a moment to address that. Ms. Hall...
Have time to revise it.
I, I have Mr. Cashmore in a moment. Ms. Hall, I have a question. You said we've been assured that this one affects CCRPI. I saw this moments before I sat down and started this meeting. When were we assured of that?
What, what, what the data that I understand is saying is that the chance that we would have massive amounts of children not attending school on those days would hurt the attendance portion of the CCRPI more than the three days of instruction might help it. We're talking about that small window, those three days. Would those three days of instruction do more to help than the lack of attendance would do to hurt? And it seems like it's coming down on the side that the attendance, lack of attendance would hurt us more. And that's in talking with the principals of the schools that I supervise.
Thank you. So you were aware of this revision before the rest of the board and the public was aware of the revision?
I'm not, I wasn't aware of anything about this. I just took it upon myself to call and ask, what does the data say? And I think that's what everyone should have done.
Okay.
Look at the data. Because what, what I'm saying is, we are not, I do not feel that I'm succumbing to a popularity vote. Because as far as I'm concerned, I easily vote for the children to be in school. But, I also say if there can be a balance here, if we see that having those three days out will not make us suffer irreparably, then I'm willing for us to make this revision.
Thank you.
And I support that.
I have Mr. Cashmore. And then because we have a number of people who patiently waited to speak, I'm going to open it up to anyone who wanted to make a public comment. Then I'll let Dr. Levett have a word. Mr. Cashmore.
I'm a little disappointed that we keep, we can't keep our personal squabbles out of this. Let's just focus on kind of the issues before us. And the issue before us is not one where everybody's going to agree. The reality is, we're trying to impose one rule, um, or one decision on a district with fifty-five different schools that have different needs. And the reality is, some schools might need the extra three days of instruction while others might not, uh, depending on where they are in their academic outcomes. But we're trying to, we're trying to make a decision that'll impact the entire district. So reasonable minds are going to disagree about whether three more instructional days are needed or not. And the reality is, no, none of us, board members, or staff, or superintendent, or teachers, or parents, or anybody can sit here and tell us those three days are going to make a difference on test scores or not. We can, we can make creative arguments and educated arguments about why they might or might not. But the reality is, we don't know. And I'm also a little disappointed in the vitriol directed towards teachers I've heard here today. I've received a lot of the same emails the rest of you received. And the vast majority were thoughtful bullet point emails that said, I have time off plans that are going to be impacted. But they also addressed academic outcomes and concerns that teachers had about, um, the quality of instruction that would be incurred during those makeup days. So, um, I, my sense in all of the feedback I got was not a bunch of adults whining about vacation days. That was part of it, but there were expressions of concern about time off, about family time, in conjunction with concerns about academics. And the concerns I, I saw about academics, yes, the overall district data for makeup days last year showed that between fifteen and twenty-four percent of students were absent on our makeup days. Yes, that's only six thousand students, but that's still six thousand students. In some schools, the absentee rate was fifty percent or higher. So, you can look at the district average, but what the feedback I received from a lot of administrators and teachers was, if I had fifty percent of my kids or even twenty-five percent of my kids absent, I wasn't introducing new concepts. And so, there, there's a difference between the quantity of days of instruction and the quality of days of instruction. And again, the reality is, we're trying to make one decision for all fifty-five or plus of our schools that have different needs. But where some schools are experiencing fifty percent absenteeism as a possibility, that concerns me. I have three kids, one in high school, one in middle school, one in elementary school. I have personally seen what's happened since we have come back from Irma. Their teachers have accelerated instruction to try to make up material that was missed. I've gotten that feedback from other parents. Teachers have told me that they've accelerated instruction as well to try to catch up on, on the lost instructional days. I am concerned about the low attendance, uh, what that will do to our CCRPI scores, which again, I'm not saying we teach to the test or make decisions to the test. But the reality is, we are graded on attendance and that's a real impact that concerns me as well. And the other concern I had was, if we move, if we include these days in December, which are, which my understanding would be, we would then move the, the assessment calendar, there are still many students who will still skip those three days in December, not take the end of course test then and then take it in January or February on the designated makeup days. Uh, which to me, when you have a month off between your last class and when you're taking an assessment, what are those assessments going to look like? So, now, I can also spend the next five minutes and make a speech as to why I think those three days in December are appropriate and we need them. Uh, the reality is, we're not gonna make a decision to make everybody happy. We should look long-term at a policy on this issue rather than making spur of the moment reactionary decisions, um, that are in front of us. And maybe we should look at a, a school by school assessment about whether makeup days are necessary, uh, based on leadership decisions, based on logistics, et cetera. But the reality is, um, the teachers I heard from made very good points, not just about time off, but also about academic outcomes. So I, I support the superintendent's recommendation today. This isn't an easy decision. Uh, I would encourage us to think long-term about a policy that, that we can apply, removing some of the emotion from, uh, the situation as appears to have arisen today.
Thank you. I have a number of members who have, did I just lose my, there, I got lots of... I have a number of members of the public who have signed up to speak. I know there are others who came that may not have had an opportunity to sign up that may want to speak. I also recognize that the published agenda item is different, it has been revised. And so, as I call out names, I very much welcome you to speak. If you do not wanna speak, you're not obligated to do so. But we are always very happy to hear from our community. The first person on our list is, uh, Mr. Sean DeVetter from Page.
Good afternoon. I have no comments on the current meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DeVetter. I appreciate you coming today. Uh, next I have, uh, Mr. Ida Cohen.
Good afternoon, Superintendent, um, Dr. Levett, to the board members. Given what I've just heard, um, I'm gonna have to go through a few reassessments of my own, so I don't have anything to discuss.
Thank you, sir. I have Ms. Allison Bennett up there in our district.
I, I don't need to speak.
Okay, thank you. I have, um, Ms. Jennifer McCord on this list.
I really just wanna say that I'm disappointed in the behaviors I see displayed here today. You should be welcoming public comment, not admonishing us from your bully pulpit. I do have the petition that was signed from parents district wide. Um, I assume that there are Title I parents on here as well, since many of our schools are Title I. Um, I think that you guys knew about the eclipse day before you voted on the calendar...
Ms. McCord, I'm sorry, can you pull that mic just a little closer to you?
Sure. You knew about the eclipse day before you voted on the calendar, it should've been included before it was completed and presented. Um, and I think that we are concerned with the loss of instruction time. I remember a discussion about losing, I think fifteen hours from high school schedules with the new busing schedule. Where was the concern then? That's two days of instruction time that was lost. So I think taking vacation away from teachers and parents is irresponsible. And then punishing us or admonishing us for asking you not to do that is not acceptable. This is the petition.
Thank you, Ms. McCord. What is the final number? Do you know how many people signed your petition?
It's at a little bit over twenty-three hundred right now.
Thank you. Those are the only individuals I had who were able to sign up in advance, but we welcome anyone else who would like to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter at this time? Yes, name please come forward. And if you will, give us your name so we can get it in there.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Leanne Esten of the Farthing. I've been a parent advocate for over ten years and advocate of educators. And to see here, and here are educators being criticized to speaking their opinion or voicing their concerns, um, despite what they are, to criticize that is absolutely despicable to me. We have educators in the classroom that are consistently not being heard. And to hear the representatives today criticize our educators is, is beyond me. They already don't feel like they can come and speak to you or to speak up for what they believe in. And to have to be personally criticized and a general, um, perspective and de-minimize about vacation times, there's more to education than being in the classroom. And a lot of times, we talk about in Title I buildings that, um, Title I families cannot experience the things that some of our other families can experience on vacation times. And so, having parents being concerned about their child going to wherever they're going, that's a piece that our educational classrooms cannot offer. And so, when they take the time to make these trips and schedule these times, these are experiences that they're learning that they need in the world as they get older, that we sit here behind closed doors and pad in Title I buildings of how we're gonna make up that type of experience. So to criticize those same parents is, is beyond me. And I'm, I'm really disappointed today. And that's all I have to say. And I really appreciate though, um, that you took into consideration the concerns and readjust that days, um, Dr. Levett. Um, I think that that was admirable. I really, um, think that when we listen to parents and can make those accommodations, um, we can bring the proper change that we need to our, um, communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Thank you. In that case, I believe you heard from all board members, Ms. Heinz, did I hear from you? I have a question. That's right, you did, I heard from you right. Yes. All right, uh, Ms., uh, Dr. Levett, would you like to speak to this?
I made the resolution. I heard from, um, the parents and the teachers. The resolution reflected that. I spoke with each of you regarding my personal and professional opinion regarding the need for additional instructional time. Thank you for hearing those concerns. And, um, I recognize the campaign that was, um, waging the community to make sure that the voices were heard. I appreciated that campaign. As an activist, I recognize the power of waging a successful campaign. And I only ask that those who waste the campaign, waste the campaign to ensure that our young people get everything that they need so they can be successful. And that's all I have to say on the topic.
Thank you, Dr. Levett. Thank you. I want to first thank everyone who is here. There are a number of people who took time off of work today, time away from other obligations. And you came to speak to an item that at the last moment wasn't actually even part of the agenda. So I apologize if you feel as though your time is wasted. I appreciate, also, the teachers who have reached out. I have to second, um, some of the comments we've had from the community, from members of the public who spoke today. Teachers should not be afraid to speak up. They should not be afraid to defend their right to have vacation just like every other person in this room is entitled to have, if that's part of what their job entails. They have families, they have children. This isn't just teachers, there are staff members, there are principals, there are custodians, there are bus drivers who potentially would lose days from, time with their family. And maybe not every one of them can afford a Caribbean vacation, but they love their children and they value their time with their children just as much as if they could afford that Caribbean vacation. We have three days recommended. I think these are great days for us to use. Two of them were designated as makeup days already. One of them is a teacher work day and I regret that teachers will miss out on that professional development time. I know how valuable that is. And I thank them in advance for the fact that I know they're gonna be doing a lot of their planning at home now, on their own time because of that day. So I thank you for that. We have three other designated storm makeup days in the calendar. If our concern is learning, not testing, which is why these days were originally proposed before the testing calendar. But if our concern's learning, then I would urge this board to consider looking at those three days as future possible makeup days. I'm not suggesting we revise that at the moment. We, we don't have that as a proposal. But if our issue is learning and not testing, then we can make up those days at times that do not take away from people's holidays and from their families. At this time, do I have, or actually, I already have a motion. At this time, I'm gonna call the question. I have all those in favor of supporting the superintendent's revised recommendation? I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, do I have a motion to adjourn? I have, I heard Ms. Jones and I have Ms. Heinz second, all those in favor. Uh, thank you. Uh, the motion, the meeting's adjourned.